You guys all ready? I take it that. Marinos, Marinos not coming?
No.
Okay, she's excused. All right. Hello, everybody. It is now five fifteen, time to get started. Uh, good evening. Welcome to the special October two thousand twenty-four zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan, and I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who have never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to come to the microphone, state the name, address for the record, and discuss your proposed project or request for variance. Uh, once we're done with that, and any questions for you, the floor will be opened, and a public hearing will be opened for anyone who'd like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed, and no new testimony will be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate, make a decision on each case. Public is welcome to stay through deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted unless we specifically seek it out. For those applicants who wish not to stay through deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decisions. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have four members present, this constitutes a quorum. I will now call the roll. Mr. Matzo.
Present.
Ms. Buchi. Mr. Landers. And Mr. Donovan is present. Ms. Resnitty is excused. Um, we have minutes from last time. Did you guys all get a chance to look at those? Any corrections, revisions? Motions?
Like to make a motion to approve the October fifteenth meeting?
Okay, can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. And that gets us a little bit early to the next part, but uh, I feel the need to let everybody, we have a, we have four cases on the agenda tonight. Uh, we have the use of the room until six thirty. Um, so we need to move it right along when we get into it, and I would uh, I would suggest to folks who were here last meeting, um, if you wish to speak, I'm not going to stop you, but I would let, I would like to let you know that we all did hear what you had to say last time, and we will keep that in mind uh, as we hear more information going forward. So, thank you for your patience. And let's get started with the, we can start right now, okay? Okay, uh, first case is one eighty-eight Court Street, FGR Realty LLC, area variance to allow no landscape buffer around the south and east sides of a parking lot where buffer is required around the entire perimeter in the C one service commercial district. Hello?
Hi, everyone, Sarah Campbell with him in Harden Kettle representing the applicant, FGR, and with me is Philip Agle, a principal, and also Chris Lynch is just passing something out to you uh, from Delta Engineering. Hi. Uh, as you know, this is an application for area variance to eliminate a landscaping buffer at the eastern and rear property lines for expansion of a parking lot uh, in this area. Um, the structure there is being removed. Um, FGR owns the commercial building to the west on the corner of Court and J Street as well. They plan to improve the parking area for this commercial building. Um, for those of you, I'm sure everyone's familiar with this location, this is a immediately adjacent to Saint Mary's Church. Um, this is a campus-like parking area with shared parking with Saint Mary's. Um, both at the eastern and the rear or southern property lines, they are immediately adjacent to Saint Mary's parking lots. Adding landscaping, um, where there now exists none makes no sense, but rather, what does make sense is adding landscaping to targeted areas to maximize the impact on the public and to soften the look of the parking area. I know that you have the um, renderings that came as part of your packet. So, you know, as you can, also Chris print just printed or passed out a new landscaping plan, which shows that we're adding landscaping, we're adding two landscaping islands to the front and rear of the lot, we're adding landscaping up against the building, and then also a landscaping bed um, on J Street, so essentially everywhere where people are going by or can see, um, we're adding landscaping. So, um, given the limited availability of parking the, in the area and the number of similar parking areas where buffers do not exist, this design maximizes the parking opportunity, it provides a pleasant streetscape, and also addresses the intent of the comprehensive plan and the landscaping requirements. I have, I have uh, additional documents to print out to, to provide you, but in the interest of time, I'm just gonna talk about. Um, there are many other areas where this type of situation exists. Um, the first one, um, in June of two thousand twenty-three at thirty-one and thirty-three Pine Street, um, there was no landscaping buffer provided on the sides of ancillary parking lots. Um, also in October of two thousand twenty-two, the Metro Center, um, that relief was to allow no landscaping where a five-foot wide landscape buffer is required for expansion of existing parking lot. We have a lot of examples in downtown Binghamton where there are parking lots that abut each other with no landscaping on those lot lines to allow a free movement of, of people, traffic, and also to allow visibility so that, you know, no one's hiding in the landscaping and people can feel comfortable walking. Um, just a few I'll mention are the little, all the little Venice parking lots, um, the Binghamton Tech Lots on Court Street, the Columbus School Parking Lots, all the parking lots around, um, the new parking deck, so where Alice Brothers is back in there, um, all the security mutual campus. Um, so it's a very common scenario. Um, and in terms of your criteria, I'll just fly through those quickly. Um, there will be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. In fact, this will enhance the safe movement of pedestrians and vehicles um, so that there is no lot-to-lot barriers. No other uh, method is possible to preserve the cooperative campus-like setting of ma, of Saint Mary's on this property. Um, the request is not substantial, there is no landscaping now. Adding targeted landscaping to get, will get the most benefit from the public streets. I'm also told by Chris, who I just asked, that in fact, we will be adding more landscaping. Um, there will be more impervious surface after the fact than, than there actually is now. Um, there will be no adverse impact on environmental conditions, adding green space. Um, and in terms of the self-created criteria, although that is a uh, a ba, a balancing factor for you, obviously, it's not dispositive. Um, it's self-created to the extent that the structure is being removed. Um, but the physical lot limitate limitations and the, you know, long-term partnership between Saint Mary's on these properties has existed for a long time. Um, so that was pretty much my presentation. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, as are uh, Mr. Agle and Chris.
I just have one question about that
So.
The spots in the Saint Mary's lot look like they're at an angle, and these look like they're straight, so is there a, like, going to be some sort of concrete divider between the two properties?
There's a little bit of a grade change.
Okay.
But we do not intend to, as my understanding, we do not intend to put any sort of divider.
Okay, so I'm, I'm wondering if people would be driving through it?
If it's a change in grade, we don't anticipate that, because there will be a little bit of a humping it to collect the storm water, keep that storm water on properties and get it for the correct drainage structure. So, while again, we're not creating a barrier, while it could be possible for some of the higher looked at vehicle could go over that, um, we don't anticipate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and you mentioned drainage, uh, for the parking lot itself, where is the water being directed?
So there's a catch basin, uh, if you look in the bottom right corner, you can head over about four stops.
I'm, I'm, I'm really sorry to interrupt. The um, the recording won't pick it up without a mic.
Sorry about that. Uh, yeah, in the bottom right corner where the landscaping is, about four parking spots in, you'll see a catch basin indicated with a small white dot, and maybe on the second sheet might be a little bit easier to see where we have provide an inlet protection. So all the water is draining from Court Street to the back of the property south, and then also from the east side west to that catch basin, and then from J Street towards the east.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Um, I believe we were about ready to move on to the next part of our of this place, so uh, stick around. We may have questions for you. All right, uh, let's see. And we have, uh, I need to mention two, two thirty-nine at this point. Or should I open the public hearing first?
Either, either or, I also wanted to mention that the Shade Tree Commission did submit comments, they're suggesting that one or two spaces be removed on that eastern property line to, to provide an additional shade tree there. Did, did I miss anything, Sal?
That, that's correct. Um, I mean, either on the eastern or the rear property line uh, to accommodate the removal of the needed uh, landscape that the applicant is looking the variance for.
Okay, so one on the eastern property line, one on the southern property line, maybe is what they're suggesting.
So the ones that are indicated on the drawing meet that request?
No, they're, they're asking, so, so on these fully paved sections here, they're saying that at the center point on the eastern property line, they would like to see a tree. Center point in the southern property line, they'd like to see a tree. That's, that's a recommendation from that commission, obviously, the zoning board can take it or leave it.
Yeah, we, we would prefer not to do that, um, for, for a couple reasons. It's a long history with this case, so we've been through COD to get the building demolished, and COD put very specific requirements that we attain a certain number of parking spaces, which is the number that we have. Um, in addition, just putting trees in the middle of a line of parking spaces where no one can really see them doesn't really make a lot of sense, as you'll know, there is a number of uh, of trees or, or shrubs along the building, there's a nice um, planting bed on Court Street, there's also one in the rear, which also will handle snow removal and uh, landscaping. Um, we just really do not feel that that is necessary, when, when there is nothing there now.
Okay.
Kelly, can I make one more comment? Just, just to clarify, the Shade Tree Commission is requesting those trees not for the public to see, not for aesthetics, but uh, to provide shade over the asphalt to control the rise in temperature.
Yep.
The other thing, it really makes, um, it really makes snow plowing very, very difficult to do that. Um, and probably the best example of that is the city's own parking lot across the street that they put in. There are no internal trees in that lot either. It's, it's hard to manage.
All right. Did you have something to add? Okay. That's fine. Thank you very much. Now I missed anything here.
Did you want me to summarize two thirty-nine or?
Yeah.
Okay. So they found no significant county-wide impacts, but they did say that the zoning board and planning commissions should consider long-term implications of the landscape variance of the subject property and/or the church property change hands in the future. The planning commission and zoning board should ensure that the project and site plan include the appropriate drainage, stormwater management, snow removal, and snow storage area that avoid to avoid impacts to the church parking lot. And there should also be a bulk table on the plans.
Okay. And for, for those of you here, that's, that's a feedback from uh, Broom County uh, Planning Department. Certain cases require their input. This is one of them. Let's see. This, this case has been reviewed by the planning department?
It, it's currently before the planning commission, they'll be um, meeting on it in November.
Planning commission, um, okay. So uh, I guess at this point, uh, do I need to make any? All right, then at this point, I would like to uh, make a motion to open the public hearing for one eighty-eight Court Street, could I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? All right, okay, then I would ask anyone present wishing to speak for or against the proposed variance, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, again, that's for one eighty-eight Court Street, the parking lot project.
Green light means go, correct? Hey, okay, excuse me. My name is John Darrow, I live at nine Asbury Court, City of Binghamton, one three nine oh five. I um, just, so who, who am I? Uh, past board of directors for the Bundy Museum of Art and History, past board of directors for the Phelps Mansion Museum across the street from this project, current board of directors for the Friends of the Kilmer Mansion, current board of directors for the Preservation Association of the Southern Tier, which is sending a correspondence, um, not in favor of the demolition of the building. I'm a recipient of two keys to the city, great honor, and I am currently the chairman of the city's Commission on Architecture and Design Historic Preservation. Welcome, thank you. It's, it's an honor to be here, Mr. Chairman, board members. So I got a couple little things I just want to go through. The uh, COD Commission, we granted a conditional approval for the demolition, okay, for the gaining of seven parking places, that's the footprint of the house. So they're looking to remove this structure for seven parking places, you're not getting any more. That's it. I have enclosed a copy of the packet for you that our commission reviewed. I'd hope that you had a moment to, to peer through. The building is in phenomenally good condition. The architectural elements are outstanding. This building was occupied up until just a few years ago, and you could move in today, it's, it's really, it's, it's a wonderful gem. It is also the last remaining residential structure on the north side of that block, which does in itself make it a unique structure. The position of COD is that we are here to preserve the architectural heritage of our community. The conditional endorsement was granted, because without the conditional endorsement, they could not move forward so that boards such as yours and planning could make an ultimate determination. In layman's terms, we don't know it all, and our commission does not make the, the sole decisions for the city. This is a joint uh, effort by all the commissions involved, and ultimately, we hope that the best decision for the future Binghamton is derived from that. They still will have to come back to COD if the conditions are met for the final dealings with it, but uh, that was the, the reason for the conditions. Um, I have some of the staff reports going through why if we just said no, they couldn't even get this far, and we try to be as, as fair and amicable as, as possible, as I know your commission does also. I also have staff report here from February twenty-fifth of two thousand eleven. I'm just gonna read a brief paragraph with your permission.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. The proposed use has been determined to require two off-street parking spaces per treatment room. The submitted floor plan indicates nineteen proposed treatment rooms, therefore thirty-eight off-street parking spaces must be provided within five hundred feet of the subject property. The submitted site plan indicates that eight parking spaces would be provided at the property known as twenty J Street and thirty-three parking spaces at one ninety-three Court Street, a total of forty-two off-street parking spaces, which is pre-existing. They are already in excess of the number of spaces for the facility. Now, I also ask at this time that you pick up that nice little packet that I handed out, the second from the last page. You will see an overview map of the site. Saint Mary's on the corner of Court and Fayette, their parking lot, which goes through to J Street, which goes up to Court Street. You see the J Street parking lot highlighted in orange behind the Guthrie Clinic. You see the lone resident standing there of one eighty-eight Court Street, and highlighted across the street on uh, Court and uh, Fayette is the other uh, existing parking lot. They had spoke during our commission meeting that they're on extraordinarily good terms with the church, allowing them use of their parking lot at times such as funerals and weddings, and that they have use of their parking lot for events as needed. It is my opinion that no more parking is necessary in this area, and that tearing down a house that is not yet run down, dilapidated, or neglect would be a cultural crime. I therefore ask the ZBA to consider very cautiously their approach to getting more parking spaces in an area that is full of them already. I think we are overextended on parking in the immediate neighborhood, and we do not need to add to it. If you have a question for me, I'd be happy to answer. If you want any of the other documents, I only had time to run off packets of this, I could, just running out of time. Um, but I thank you for hearing me.
No, and we appreciate the uh, the information. Um, I, I do notice the applicant had a response to some of the numbers of parking spots. Okay. Did you guys have any questions? Did you guys have any questions for Mr. Darrow?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Yeah, you can go right, you can respond to that now.
Thank you, um, just to refocus on the topic at hand is an area variance for landscaping, there's no consideration for actually parking before you tonight. Um, and with, with respect to the comments that Mr. Darrow made regarding COD's involvement in this process, they have made their determination. Mr. Darrow's colleagues disagreed with him, um, with respect to his determination. He was overruled by the majority in that case. Um, and I, I'm not, I'm not really sure where some of his comments were coming from, but I would object in terms of them being relevant to the record before you at all. Um, there was no comment whatsoever, whatsoever with respect to the actual criteria that you have to examine um, for this variance. And um, whether or not there's a need or not a need for parking is not, is not part of that criteria. Um, the issue before you is, does the landscaping requirement make sense when you're having a parking lot to parking lot situation where there's a cooperative sharing of parking amongst the, amongst the owners? Um, which is exactly this sort of cooperative arrangement that is encouraged in the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, anyone else wishing to speak for or against the proposed project? Mr. Darrow, you have some more comments, come on down. Yeah, you, you, I need you on the microphone. Uh? Yeah, I don't think he's gonna take that long.
No, no. I actually did vote in favor of it, I was opposed to it, but vote in order to proceed. If you check the record.
Okay.
It was unanimous.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed variance on parking lot?
I'd just like to say, as far as the bill goes, historical significance was never actually determined.
And, and I must add here that it's not our purview. We're, we're, as the applicant pointed out, we're looking at the parking lot as designed, uh, not with the actual project, the, the design of it. Okay, so seeing no one else wishing to come forward, I would make a motion to close the public hearing for one eighty-eight Court Street, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, that's unanimous, we can move on to our deliberations. And I see that I um, I, I think, I think we're pretty much done. I don't think so, unless something comes up, not on this one. Yeah, I, do you have, are you gonna have another one? You, if you want to leave your stuff right there, then okay. Um, I believe I need to make a motion, just have a certain type of.
Yes, this is an unlisted action.
Okay. I would make a motion, this is an unlisted action, and that uh, ZBA be lead in uh, seeker, could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Can I go through the criteria now? All right. I'm rusty here, give me, be patient with me a little bit. Um, since this is an unlisted uh, action, and we are the lead agency, there's, there's a short form environmental impact that we have to go through and get consensus upon. So bear with me, uh, will proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And we have to decide whether it's a, a nowhere small impact, or if it's a moderate or large impact. And uh, I would argue that it would be a small impact.
I agree.
For this kind of uh, variance. Will the proposed action result in a change in the user intensity of use of land? I don't think it would change the intensity, it would go from mostly parking lot in a, in an unoccupied building to mostly parking lot. So, very small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? It's gonna be a little change uh, from having a residential building. Um, but again, that's not really the, the, the part that we're looking at, so I would say little to no impact. Um, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? Uh, it may increase a little bit, the vehicular traffic, but I I I would argue it would be a small impact. Okay. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Again, this is one that's left blank for us, and I would, I would have to lean towards the little to no, because of the um, the agencies that are already looked into and approved this project, so regarding our part of it, I would say little to no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, but lands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase for, in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Uh, having gone through the criteria, I would like to um, move that we have a negative declaration for seeker, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. All right, now we have to look at the criteria. Right? Okay. Let me get the right case in front of me here. It's in my hand. So, for parking lots and area variance, we have five criteria, which the applicant has already pointed out to us, is it an undesirable change to grant this variance? Is there a reasonable alternative, is it a substantial request, adverse impact on the physical or environment, environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and is it self-created? So granting this variance, would it be an undesirable change to the neighborhood?
No.
It may even be a slight improvement since there is inclusion of some landscaping. Could there be more? Sure. It's, it's more than a lot of places have. Um, so I'm, I'm satisfied that it's not that undesirable. Reasonable alternative, uh, is there something else that could be done? Is there something more to get closer to the five-foot order?
I don't think there is, because if you do this and have them put the five-foot landscaping in, you're losing the parking spots that they're requiring.
Right. Okay, okay. Is it a substantial request? And I would argue mostly not, because there are many cases of this throughout the city. Is it the most desirable? No, I mean, if we had room, yes, a five-foot buffer would be nice and uh, pleasant to have there, but in lieu of it, I think three to four different areas designated as some green space, I think that's a a, a nod to the right kind of action. Uh, is it an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions to grant this variance? I don't, I don't see how it could be. And was it self-created? Sure, I believe it was self-created. Sh- sure, I believe it was self-created to do the project, but uh, yeah. Any other discussion on this application?
Nope.
John, would you like to make a motion for us?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance to allow no landscape buffer on the south and east sides of the parking lot. Where the buffer is required around the entire perimeter in the C one service commercial district.
Can I get a second? I got a second. All in favor? Hi, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And second case on our agenda is uh thirty five Grand Boulevard. Uh, Sayad Siddiki use variance per conversion of a ground floor of an existing mixed use building into two dwelling units in the R two residential one and two unit dwelling district. Hello again, come on down.
Eddie? Hi, Sarah Campbell again with him and Harden Kettle for the applicant who is here with me. Um, I understand that you've heard this matter a couple of times. Once officially, once unofficially, right? Um, the applicant just reached out to me to ask me for some assistance and just kind of getting through this final, final stage. I understand that he came in with an original plan, um that you requested that be modified to reduce density, which he has done. Um, obviously you know that this is a. Property that was a, you know, it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It used to be an OBGYN's office and then was a dentist's office. At least the whole time my kids were at Thomas Jefferson. So their modified plan provides for two units um in the relevant space. Um, one with three bedrooms and one and a half baths, one with two bedrooms and one full bath. Um, the unit sizes are about twelve hundred nine square feet and nine hundred and eighty square feet. Um, so that would be, you know, two, two units with a total of five bedrooms, again, three and two. There is an issue of parking and I understand that was uh sort of a big issue. So I've examined the easement that you have discussed before. Um, as far as I can see, the easement is legal and binding. But. For those of us that know that neighborhood as a practical matter, that property is pretty far away. There are a lot of on-street parking spaces, both on Grand Boulevard and um the side street, Helen Street. Um, it is my guess that. Even if those. Easement spaces were available to the applicant, that the property owners would park on the street. That being said, um, I believe that three parking spaces are required. Um, he has the legal right to utilize nine parking spaces, spaces pursuant to the easement. Um, so the issue of parking um seems to be satisfied. And I think those were the only major topics that were outstanding for you. I know he discussed his economic. Issues at the last hearing. I don't want to go through those again unless you would like me to. Um, I think he underestimated his tax. Um, burden. I think he said it was thirteen thousand and it's actually about sixteen thousand. And. Other than that, I'm not sure if you want me to go through anything again. I mean, obviously this is a use variance. You have to not be able to realize a reasonable return for all permitted uses. The days of utilizing this property for commercial activity with no immediately adjacent parking lot. Um, are really over. We don't have those small dentist and doctor's office anymore. Um, I understand that there was a previous app owner of this property um that um. Did not do things the right way. Um, this applicant uh intends to do that and that's why he's here with you today. Um, he is a uh, what is your title?
Peace officer.
He's a peace officer for the city of New York. His plan is to retire here. Um, when these properties are, when this renovation is completed. Um, so you will ultimately have an owner occupied property. Um, also fulfilling some of the desperate need for apartment rentals um in the community, especially, you know, right near a school. It's a nice opportunity for a small family um to be able to get into a neighborhood like this.
Any questions for the applicant now?
Um, so. From September, when we first met.
Yeah.
And um it was recommended that you redraw, which we see. So did you work with code? Did they help you? I mean, is that something that? Um, so because we talked about the windows.
Yeah, they'll they'll look at it after your approval because they'll have to get permits for it. Um, he did have the plans laid out by an architect. So hopefully they've met the criteria, but um. Things like windows, uh, duh, two measures of egress and ingress. Um, the correct amount of air and light. We do believe that we've met all that criteria. But again, that'll be something for code to look at when he goes for building permit. As well as the fire separation between the two, the two units, which I think has to be like a three hour fire separated. Wall. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Stick around for a little bit. We are probably will have a couple more questions for you. Thank you for coming back. Then at this point, I would like to make a motion to officially open the public hearing for uh thirty five Grand Boulevard. And uh I will remind everybody here who was here last time, we heard you, we took notes, uh but if you'd like to come back up and. Voice anything succinctly, I I we would appreciate it. The I couldn't so second, all in favor? All right, so I've opened the public hearing. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hi, Eileen Hustlin, thirty Grand Boulevard. Uh, since I spoke the last time, I just wanted to make a brief comment tonight. Since the last meeting, my husband and I talked at length with Said and we feel very differently than we did at at the hearing. He explained in detail to us what his plans are and the fact that he has family who live in the area. And as Sarah said, he's planning uh when he retires to move to this area. So I think it's a far different approach than the previous owner had. And it would be good to see the building um occupied and taken care of. So.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to just come on down?
Hey, Timothy Hustlin, thirty Grand Boulevard.
Hi.
That's my wife who just spoke. I didn't speak the last time, but um after meeting with uh Said. You know, a couple of times over the past couple of weeks here and that. He um. He seems to be very sincere in what he wants to do and being, you know, with the NYPD. He does do background checks on his tenants. And he says that. A lot of times you'll have people approach him to want to pay more in the rent and not do the background check. And he says that's a red flag that you're up to no good. And the previous owner did not pave a very smooth road for this guy to follow.
Yeah.
With um some of the riffraff and well, I can't really, I don't know if I can say that, but I will riffraffed and he allowed to live there. And um some of them were on first name basis local law enforcement as they're being evicted. So um he's got a, you know, a hard enough hill to climb, let alone without this guy, you know, setting the neighborhood against them. I think, you know, his intentions are good. I think, you know, whatever the city tells him to do code wise with the construction is, you know, he will follow. And being out of construction myself, if you want me to come in and take a look at it, I'd be more than happy to. At that time, you know, whenever, you know, we need it.
Okay.
I have, you know, spoke with two of his tenants that he has. They are, you know, one has a single mother with two little girls. And the other one says uh BU student. And they're, you know, they do what they can. You know, to keep the, you know, to keep their part of the property up. The the mother actually has decorated the outside of the house for Halloween. And um actually it looks kind of nice. Like I know told her that too, so. You know, it's. You know, he's he's all, he's he's making an attempt to kind of like help out the neighborhood. That's that's my opinion, so, yeah, but um, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Speak, come on down.
My name is John Patterson and I welcomed the opportunity to be here and just say um. That it's a different story that I heard last time, that he's going to be a resident there, his occupation. And hearing from my fellow neighbors, I live at one eighty four Helen Street. And so I wanted to say of record, welcome to our neighborhood.
Thanks, John. Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you all very much. I guess we can kind of disregard most of the remarks from last time, so. I thank you all. Last call. Okay, seeing none, uh I would make a motion to close the public hearing for thirty five Grand Boulevard. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Just want to know for the record, we did get that one letter from Anthony Brzezinski today in regards to this as part of public.
That was regarding the parking?
It it was submitted as part of public comment, so I just wanted to mention it.
You all saw that? Okay. All right, and. Let's see, is this an unlisted or it doesn't need anything, does it? Type two action under seeker, no further um environmental review is required. All right, we can move right on to criteria and deliberations. And this is a use variance, which is a little different for us, but we have the criteria. The applicant cannot realize a reasonable return. Provided that lack of return is substantial, as demonstrated by competent financial evidence. Uh, two, that the alleged hardship related to the property in question is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district neighborhood. And three, the requested use variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And four, that our hardship is not self-created. Excuse me. Over the last. Three times that we've spoken to the applicant, we have addressed the uh whether or not you can get a reasonable return. And uh tried to market the property as a professional space. And I believe the response, there there was very little, if any, there was no action. So um. I'm relatively satisfied that uh that's not a reasonable use for this property at this point. In this environment. Uh, that the alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. Sure. It's not, it's not a normal situation in the neighborhood to have a. A commercial office anymore in residential space. Growing up, it used to be more. More of a thing, but um. And it would be a rather unique thing in nowadays, so I'm I'm satisfied with that aspect. The requested use variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Um, I think in hearing from the neighbors that uh they're. They're they're more important to me to to be on board with this part of the um requirement than our. Ascertation of it. Um, it looks like it's going to be. Like an R two type. Setup. With potentially small families, which is actually a a very beneficial thing in this in this time around here. Uh, there and this that the hardship was not self-created. Uh, to some extent it was, but uh the applicant. Is making a large improvement over what was just preceding him, so. I'm I'm satisfied that's that's not going to hold us back. John, would you care to make a? Another motion for us?
Sure, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the use variance for the conversion of ground floor of an existing mixed use building into a two dwelling unit. In an R two residential, one and two unit dwelling.
Can I get a second, please? I'd see a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Good luck going forward. Thank you all for your input. Appreciate it. Third case. Thanks. Uh, thirteen Air Street, uh, A three Binghamton LLC area variance for the paving of a parking area with no landscape buffer. Or five foot wide landscape buffers required for new parking areas in R three multi-unit dwelling district. Is the applicant present? Hi, I think we, did we see him last?
Yes.
Okay, good. Oh, yeah, I remember.
Hi, um, my name is Paul Mangreno. I'm with Amicus Properties. Uh, on this variance for the driveway. The driveway is already installed. I don't know if anyone realizes that what I'm doing is I went and had it surveyed. And I went and had the engineer show me my spaces as the girl that came up last week or two weeks ago. He said there's four cars already in the driveway. I'm trying to get a fifth to get it off street parking. And that all I've done is showed you a different layout than what was, they're just parking haphazardly, whichever way they'd like. Uh, and it was already four. I'm adding just a fifth parking space and putting that in there uh as as these plans are. So basically uh all I have, and there was not an exist any. Um, buffer, five foot buffer. Matter of fact, the garage is within a foot of the actual property line. To the side, a a house on the right there, that one space, if you look on the drawings. Um, and then you're up against the house.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Is there any other structures? On that property?
No, what you see uh that's that's white that has the one spot was an old garage. I don't know when it was taken down. But that's just the one spot and then it's got the concrete, it says concrete slab.
Right.
That was a struck there. There has not been a structure since we've owned it the past year and a half. And I know the neighborhood, I have not, because we own some other properties on that street. And it's, I've never seen a garage there, but it's a footprint of a garage or a concrete slab. I'm assuming it was.
Is there like a work shed of any?
Nothing, nothing. The house next door. Uh, on the other side of the right of way, they have a garage that is existing. And then that small parking area, they have a right of way to come down, an easement to get behind their house. We own the actual driveway, but there's an easement for them to utilize that to go behind their house.
Okay, and so then sixty eight Chapin. Backs almost to the property line, is that correct?
They come off that porch and that slab is within a foot, foot and a half. Uh, I don't, on the top of my head, even just looking at this, it's quite close. But there's not going to be a car except for down at the end. The other words, this concrete slab is a blank space. Going to be probably for snow, a snow shelf, be able to push the snow into that spot. Along with up alongside the the house as well. And the grade goes out towards the road, always has. I'm not changing the driveway other than striping it. To put a fifth spot. To put my spots in there. Excuse me.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Stick around for a couple minutes, please. Then at this point, I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for thirteen Air Street and the area variance.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you for keeping nudging me along there. Appreciate it. Uh, public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or against, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Kenneth Brown, sixty six Chapin. I live, um, I sent you all a video or I sent a video via email, I believe it was supposed to be uh. Sent off to all of you. It shows my back property line uh that borders this exact spot. Um, it's about a. Two to three foot drop. There is a concrete pad, but when I was looking at it the other day. There, the concrete pad itself isn't in great shape and it also doesn't go, from my my understanding, flush to the property line. And my worry is that if I don't, I didn't see in the plan if it was supposed to be repaved with solid blacktop. And if so, my worry is that it's going to cause runoff into my backyard. And if it does run off into my backyard, there, as I, you can see in the video, there is uh, it's higher up in my yard, so it would go through the full thing. And then there's a major deck that has support beams right there that it could potentially run through. And I just, I didn't see anything about any studies done, or I I was just curious if there was any of that done, because if not, I want to vote no, I want a no vote on this, just.
Have you noticed any runoff coming over that drop-off in the past?
Uh, minor, but like I said, there's a very, it's not flush, like, I'm assuming it's supposed to be with a zero very, or the zero variance that they want to do. The concrete pad is, there's about this much space. I don't know if that causes enough permeation, but.
I, I'm not that up on.
Yeah, that's, I just want to know, I want to know if there are any.
Today couldn't be built that close. Uh, back in the day, typically things were built right up to the line. Um, that one was probably built up to what people thought the line was at the time, because it was probably built in, say, the thirties or forties, based on the age of the house. It would be interesting to keep track of, but I think the applicant said he has not done any more paving, no change has been made to the driveway in how long? More than a year?
Like it would be if it were out, I would pull in, it's draining into my yard.
Yeah.
Or something to make sure it stays on, I'll, I'll go ahead and look at whatever needs to be done.
Yeah.
Keep it from running on there, but if we didn't do anything.
Okay.
It's been like this for years.
Okay, I I want to keep this discussion to a minimum because uh, Shalan can't pick this up on the, on the video, on the audio, so. We we may have an opportunity to discuss this in our deliberations, so I I understand your concern.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that something is done to make sure this doesn't happen. I'm not saying no, just as long as.
You want to make sure it gets addressed?
Yeah, because there's, there'll be, you saw the video, that's my full backyard and potentially other neighbors that can run off into. And that those support beams, I just worry about those getting washed out.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against the project? Come on down.
Good evening, board members. I'm Robert Kavanaugh. I live on Chestnut Street in Binghamton. I'm the third district councilperson. This is in my district. When the uh, application first came up, I got some calls from neighbors and and constituents uh, with uh, specifically, you've heard from Mr. Brown, his runoff concerns, which is very specific to him, uh, changes to relatively minor changes in grading on the west side, given the age of our homes and the state of our basements can often result in in uh, you know, changes in runoff that result in extra damp basements that, you know, had been in a state of equilibrium for many years. So I appreciate Mr. Brown's concerns, um, but it sounds like the applicant is willing to work with him and and uh, yeah, make sure that that's not a concern. And in this particular situation with the Air Street property, uh, it sounds like the uh, from the drawings and from the commentary, it sounds like the, basically, the back has already been paved. We have a shared driveway and it's already been paved. We're not making any material changes. I would just like to ask the board to keep this case in mind, a case that was, I believe, last year on Chapin Street and these that keep coming up in the Tree Street District. We're not the Tree Street District just because of the street tree, of the, because of the street names, but because of the amount of trees we have on streets and in backyards. And if you look at, if you're talking about character of the neighborhood and little by little, making changes that would result in the character of the neighborhood, I think we have to be very, very careful of looking at uh, these situations in the Tree Street District. Where we're looking to balance alleviating on-street and off-street parking problems uh, with maintaining the character of the neighborhood. Uh, if you look at north of Maine, if you look at some of the professional things that used to be professional offices on Oak Street, pull up a Google map, go on Broom County GIS, look at those blocks, you will see where backyards and aust- uh, backyards, places that used to be garages, you had shared driveways, maybe two garages, they're gone. And they were paved over. Or in this situation where the garage disappeared several years ago, a couple owners ago, who knows? And it slowly gets turned into a whole paved off-street parking. I think in the heart of the Tree Street District, in particular, where you see backyards still intact, you see blocks intact as they were meant to be, we have to look at that bigger picture when we're looking at individual projects. Again, this is not that case, I don't think. I think uh, this is a very minor change compared to what has already been done. I don't want to see other properties end up where we are here, where the entire back has already been paved. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against?
I just want to ask the applicant to come back up to the um, microphone. So you basically, you're not going to repaint. You just want to paint lines?
I am not changing a thing but painting spaces.
Okay.
I've had it surveyed so that I can see what's a legal space, how we can get in and out of here and add an extra car off the street of an existing parking lot that's been there for years.
Okay.
That's all this is.
Okay.
And I will be mindful of if there's any kind of runoff, it should have been brought to my attention. I know it's grading out my driveway out to the street, not to the back, because I would worry about that to making it and washing out that back wall, because I do know the wall he's talking about. It's got a lot of vegetation and vines, didn't even want to cut that because that's what's holding that all together nicely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, while you're there, um, could I ask you a question? I would imagine a good share of your renters are going to be students.
They are students. Most of our, my students are students, rather.
And this, Tito was just showing me the the lead-in to the video that Mr. Brown's. At the back of the property, is there anything to keep the car from going off that?
That's why I'm suggesting a curb or I can bolt something through the concrete, an actual stop.
I I think curbing.
They've been, they've been doing it for a long time parking there, but I can add, and I don't want any problems.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
With with proper curbing, you could also keep water from going there too.
That's my point, but I do know it grades this way.
Yeah. But in a heavy rain situation, it's going to go everywhere. Okay.
We could do that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against? All right, then I would move to close the public hearing for uh, thirteen airs, second, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. And. Okay, I would, I would move that this is a secret type two action. And do I need, I don't, I don't need seeker, do I? Do I need seeker? And and does not require seeker. Uh, can I get a second to that motion? Thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, now we can get into the criteria of an area variance. Is an undesirable change reasonable alternative? Is it a substantial request? Doesn't have an adverse impact and is self, uh, self-created hardship? Uh, whether or not it's an undesirable change, uh, and this is regarding the parking, parking area, not having a five-foot wide landscape buffer uh, has has not existed since the building was. It would, it would be virtually impossible to add. Um, so it will be no change to the neighborhood. Is there a reasonable alternative to the uh, to the five-foot requirement? Short of uh, some pretty good construct or demolition, I don't really think there's a reasonable alternative. Is it a substantial request? Um, I would answer that, um, as people have noted, um, the west side has a number of backyard situations very similar to this, as does the south side, east side. Um, I mean, as was also commented, uh, yes, I do think we should have more green space and more trees, um, but this might not be the place to to uh, make that.
I agree.
Happen where it's not, not really viable. And granting this uh, a variance of not having the five-foot uh, buffer, is that an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions? I would say no. Um, I would like to, on the record, state that we would like the applicant to put curbing hopefully affixed to the ground at the back of the lot, uh, to both protect parking and to redirect any uh, runoff into a suitable lower area and not the neighbor's backyard.
I agree.
Okay.
That's good.
Any other discussion on the criteria? Then John, would you care to make another motion for me?
Sure, uh, I'd like to make a motion for the area variance, the paving of a parking area with no landscaping buffer where a five-foot landscape buffer is required for one new parking spot and a R three multi-unit dwelling district, along with working with the neighbor in the back on Chapin Street to possibly stop any runoff and uh, into their yard from the water or snow.
The addition of curbing.
In in addition with curbing.
Could I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, just want, real quick, just for silence uh, minutes, the 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 variance is approved, subject to the installation of a curb on that southern property line, okay?
Yes. Okay, last case, uh, forty-five later have Martuska Brothers Construction. Area variance for zero-foot front setback where fifteen feet is a minimum requirement in the R one residential single-unit dwelling district.
The applicant i- is not here today, but um, they did reach out. There are no changes proposed to what they they presented last time.
Okay, um, can we just uh, open and close the public hearing? Okay, um, just let me get a string in front of me. All right. We all heard, I think everybody that's here was here last month or two weeks ago to hear this. Applicants proposing to construct a temporary handicap accessible ramp, um, not connected to the house. Any concerns you guys have after what we heard last month?
Yeah, after seeing the construction on this, it looks like you drive a car up it.
Yeah. Okay, then I would officially like to close or uh, make a motion to open the public hearing for this project. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
And I will ask anyone present wishing to speak in favor or against. Did you get any feedback online? Okay. Then I would also make a second motion to close the public hearing for forty-five later. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I got you. And uh, let's see, this is a what kind of seeker is this? This is a unlisted action. I I'd like to make a motion that this isn't seeker unlisted action and that ZBA be the lead agency. Could I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Let me go through the criteria quickly. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Uh, that'd be a small, potentially small impact. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity use of the land? No, it'd be no change. Will the proposed, I mean, it'll cover a little ground, but little to no. Will the proposed action impair the character quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies or public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Excuse me, no. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Uh, having gone through the criteria, I would move that we have a negative seeker declaration. Could I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, let's go through the criteria. Undesirable change achieved by some other or a reasonable alternative? Is it substantial? Will it affect the impact or affect or impact the physical or environmental conditions and was it self-created? Uh, will, will allowing this create an undesirable change in the neighborhood?
No.
No, and as the applicant stated, neighbors have spoken in favor of it, uh, uh, even dog walkers coming by have have voiced their approval. Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, usable for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. To get the desired result? No. I mean, this is going to increase, improve the quality of life. Uh, whether the requested area variance is substantial? I wouldn't call it substantial. I, no. Uh, whether it's going to affect the uh, physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? No. Nope. And if it was self-created, yeah, to, I'm sure it was self-created. Yeah, I'm not concerned with that really. Uh, could I get a motion again, John?
Sure, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for a zero front setback where fifteen-foot is the minimum requirement in R one residential, single-unit dwelling for a handicap ramp.
Could I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
That's unanimous. Okay. That is approved. You can let them know. Thank you very much. Um, do we have any other business? You guys have anything?
No.
I'd like to make.
Yes.
Okay. Unless you don't get anything, we wouldn't, we wouldn't mind if you get it.
We um, there is a debate as to whether there will be a meeting, but if there is, it'll be on the twelfth.
Okay. And you probably won't even be here. Uh, motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you very much.
We all had a second at the same time. Eight minutes early.